With that, um, does anyone wish to speak? You'll need to unmute your line if you wish to speak.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Cherry, just real quick to the two emails from the watchresses quoting the regulations of Connecticut State Agencies for noise. You need to close that loop probably with the town planner. It's a very technical document. And on my first reading from zone C to zone B, and then from zone C to zone A, they're allowed 70 decibels for short periods and backup alarms and stuff. I don't know that that will help you. So that's why I think if I were you, I'd go look. And then for the chair and maybe the town planner, I thought there was a stipulated agreement that, um, put all this in place. Have we resolved how to get around that when it's time to approve a new plan?
Liz, I know you discussed this with Carl Landalina, our land use attorney. Can you address that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I did send a copy of the application to Carl Landalina. He said he would review it and the stipulated judgment and comment. I have not heard comments yet, but he's aware that, um, the issue is being continued because we're where we have to be at. Plus, you know, he, we, we kind of brought him in to work with us on Monday and that we needed legal representation for the violation, although we did not end up needing.
Yeah. And to continue that, we've asked Mr. Landalina to be present at the public hearing on, in March, so that we do have questions during that process.
Can you all hear me still?
Oh, we heard you there. Yeah, I thought you were done. We, I stopped being able to hear you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I lost my connection. But yes, I am working with Carl to ensure that any modification complies with the stipulated judgment.
Yep. And I just stated, we, we asked Carl to be present at our March 11th meeting, so that if anything comes up during that process, we'll have him on hand immediately.
Thank you. I lost, I lost connection.
Yep. Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to make any statements? Hearing none then. I will continue the public hearing for application PZ 20-06 SUP to March 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Next is discussion and decision application PZ 20-06 SUP. As the public hearing is not closed, we will table that item. Next item under old business is just an update from the Agricultural Ad Hoc Committee. So the preliminary minutes from our, the January 28th meeting are provided here. And so I think the, the most notable thing is that in the February meeting, the, the committee has agreed to review the proposal from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so essentially as a group, we'll go through that and understand what all that is and whether or not that can be used as a starting point or not. Next, under new business, we have a new application, PZ-2001 SUP, 12 Sherwood Trace, Gales Ferry, Connecticut. This is for a home husband permit for goats. So we will schedule the public hearing for that on, at our March 11th, 2021 meeting. Next item under new business is an informal discussion with the Leadyard Fair Association addressing potential use of 39, 29, and 19 military highway for, as a future site of the Leadyard Fair Association. Who do we have from the Leadyard Fair who is going to speak tonight? Is that you, Sarah, or?
That is. Hello, Mr. Chairman, commissioners and guests. We are back with a more favorable piece of property and opportunity for the fair. So we were hoping to get some of your counsel and advice as we look to pursue that property. Do you want me to discuss in general what we should be merits of being? Okay.
Yeah, you can start it. You know, you can give an introduction. I'm sure, you know, people have some questions. I hope that all the commissioners have seen the support letters that came in regarding this.
So we have taken lessons learned from our efforts at the Gallup Hill property to find a property that might have more appealing features to it as a potential home for the fair. And the former Ellis Acres or Sweet Hill Farms property will be coming up for sale. And we were contacted about the property in advance to see if it might be a good home for the fair. It's in a commercial zone. It has public water and power on site. It has access to two fire hydrants within the furthest one away is 135 linear feet from the, from the front door. It has access in and out of the property at two intersections with Signal. So Route 12 and Hurlebutt Road and Route 12 and Military Highway. It has much less impact to residential areas with only four houses abutting the property. The rest are commercial. We did have the opportunity to meet with the Gales Ferry, Gales Ferry District Association. We met with them last Thursday and talked about our interests and our plans for the property. We received a, a bunch of unsolicited letters of support for our intended use of the property. And we were touched to receive those and have forwarded those along. We do see positive impact for the commercial businesses in the area. They would receive more traffic during the fair weekend, and there might be opportunities for them to offer paid parking. We would not anticipate having parking on the site itself other than minimal parking for vendors and fair staff who are staffing the event. And it currently has 9.25 acres cleared and is got the kind of property characteristics that we would need in order to be able to put rides there or other auxiliary buildings that might be used during the time of the fair.
So how much, how much land do you need? How much of the, the lot would you need to use?
So we would be making use of the majority of declared land during fair weekend, right? Because obviously, the majority of the time, we're not going to have large animal trailers, vendors on site, you know, same thing with the rides. So we would not look to materially change the nature of the property. We would eventually, over time, need to add some of the key features of the fair, such as a horse ring, place for the oxen pull, a pole barn similar to what was on the former fairgrounds in order for people to be able to show their animals, those types of activities. But the topsoil was largely removed a decade or so ago. So it's got the type of ground that we would need without us needing to, um, make any material changes to the property itself.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I, you know, I can certainly say personally, you know, I mean, this, this site for the Leadyard Fair is, you know, for me infinitely better than the location on Gallup Hill for many of the reasons that, that you cited. You know, we've got good access to, you know, essentially the, the largest, highest volume road in Leadyard. You know, very close by, we've got, you know, significant parking. We've got good power and water there. And so there's a lot of things going for it. From the zoning point of view, this is a commercial district. And, you know, I, I kind of took a look at our, our use table, you know, and we, you know, we're going to have to do something i- in order to make sure the zoning regs actually allow this. But essentially, anything that, you know, I think you could consider a, a component of this is allowed in that district. You know, field sports are allowed, indoor/outdoor recreation, parking structures, restaurants. I mean, you know, whatever you would sort of consider those individual components of a fair to be there, allowed in this zone. And so I'm, I'm optimistic that, you know, we ought to be able to make a fairly simple change in order to allow the use here. Do other commissioners have questions for the fair committee?
I actually have one, Mr. Chairman, Marty Wood. Thank you very much. Mrs. Blinderman, I know that, I noticed there is some wetlands on that 19 acres too. And can you kind of address, when you said you would, during fair time, you would mo- use most of the property? Can you tell us what, what your cautions or what your thoughts are, how, how to avoid the wetlands that's there? Thanks.
Yes. So we would make sure that we had at least 100 feet of clearance from the wetlands at all points in time. We are typically putting up fencing in areas where we don't want foot traffic. So I would imagine that we would have a large amount of protective fencing to keep people in the areas that we would want them and not in the others. Clearly, that's not an area that we would want to put rides nearby or other things. So that's kind of in the back corner of the property. We can easily avoid making that an area where people are moved toward.
I've got a follow on, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, Mrs. Blinderman. So that wetland was hard for me to, to kind of assess, but I think there's 19.2 acres or posted that there, right? And so are we talking four acres that, that's involved with that wetland? What does that reduce your usable space to?
So again, there are 9.25 acres cleared. At the moment, we don't anticipate clearing a large amount of additional space and certainly nothing in the wetlands, right? And that's not an area that we would need to, to be in. We can easily get done what we need to get done without having to work in that area.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so the, the fenced in pasture land, are you considering that to be cleared?
So yes, we are. And we'd use it largely for animal uses. So we, we haven't laid everything out yet, but where we anticipate potentially having the large animals is where that existing kind of lean to shed is and where the animals pastured in the past. That would be a good location for things like our oxen pull and space for our large animals.
Very much. I, I also agree with Chairman Woody and that that seems like that's a very ideal place that, you know, that we would have to make modifications, but it certainly is better than a previous one. Thanks.
Thank you, Marty. Any other questions from commissioners?
If I could, Chairman Woody, Mike Cherry.
Please, Mr. Cherry.
Hi, Sarah. Good spot. Probably going to have to change the name, though. You can't call it the Leadyard Fair if it's going to be in Gales Ferry.
One town, right?
But seriously, 23 Military Highway, Taggart's, is bracketed on both sides of this property. You may want to approach them and make sure you get their endorsement. The topography is exciting. From about the pavilion area west to the south property line, you're looking at 10, 20, 30, 40, about a 40-foot drop from the road down to your 30-foot over a short period, short distance. Very challenging, but it's not in the cleared area. It's just extra. There's also that one garage up there that's part of it, which could be useful. Once again, access and egress. Right now, the site has one way in and out. Not insurmountable. I'm sure you can survive that. Marty talked about the wetlands. There's also a large flood plain, FEMA flood plain that covers the same areas, the wetlands. I think Alice Acres and, and possibly even now, those areas that were wetlands and flood plain were grazing areas for some of the animals. They weren't actively used for anything. Chairman Woody mentioned the zoning regs. I agree with him. I don't think there's anything insurmountable, but there probably are some changes that may be required, especially if I, if I take it to the next step. Three days use out of a year doesn't support a viable active fair. So you're going to want to be able to run other events. And I wouldn't want you to think that things that may be happening on that property today are necessarily in compliance and legal with zoning. What you can say is if they're not, we haven't taken action yet because among other things, we're looking at our agricultural regs and trying to figure out what to do with agricultural events. But you may want to at least put a stake in the ground and say, here's the types of things we'd like to do so we can support that when it comes time. The other thing I'll note is for years I was active with Our Lady of Lourdes Festival. Same area. Parking's a little different because at that time, Ocean State wasn't there and the Validities parking area was empty. So there was a lot of parking there. But parking's not insurmountable. We've already held events like this in that area successfully. So I think that's, that's a positive note. The one question I have is when's the Harvard Yale Regatta? We never had to worry about that with the fair before because you were on opposite ends of town and you kind of supported each other. If people came for the regatta, they would come to the fair. Well, if they're both in the same area at the same time, that could be problematic. So I think that's worth looking at. But, but I agree with Chairman Woody. This is so much better than, than what we had before. I don't see anything that's insurmountable. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Cherry, other comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Tom Boudreau.
Please, Mr. Boudreau.
I think this is a wonderful idea. It's a good piece of property and I have been on it myself. And I, I really think this could work. And I, I'm in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boudreau. Other commissioners?
Nate, this is Loretta Kent.
Yeah. So, sorry, we're not in a place where we're taking public comment on this at this point.
Oh, I was just going to comment about the regatta.
Okay, I'll, I'll allow that.
I'm with the fair, but the regatta, I believe, is held the first weekend in June. I'm not, I, I'm pretty sure that's when that's held.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. Yeah. And, and I think in, in reality, it's just something that, you know, would need to be kept a mind, keep a, you know, a thought on, you know, from the zoning point of view, it's somewhat out of our jurisdiction, but a good thing to keep it, keep an eye on. But thank you. It sounds like they'd be pretty far apart.
Chairman Woody, I have a comment.
Please, Ms. Campbell.
I agree. I think this does look like a good site for this, for the fair. I think that in looking at the available parking in the area, whatever plan comes forward, it would be preferable if most of the parking can be arranged with temporary agreements with the lots available and just providing minimal onsite parking. If possible. Just to reduce the, the surface area that that would require and the, you know, all the drainage and those concerns.
Yeah, thank you. You know, there, there's certainly, you know, fairly significant parking in the area. And so I think certainly it would be possible. The other thing that I'll point out is that should this go forward, I would think that this would make an excellent argument for us to think about moving forward with some sort of a plan to improve the walkability of Gales Ferry District so that you could in fact park at Riverside Mall, for example, and be able to walk over to this site for events. But that's, that's my own soapbox. Other comments from commissioners?
I get one last word and Chairman, we could dust off the plans we had for the sidewalks in Gales Ferry when we did the Main Street application and, and figure out where we could find that kind of funding. But that puts sidewalks on 12 Hurlebutt Military Highway in the area of the library and the post office, all the way up to the driveway for what was then Alice Acres.
Yeah, thank you. So the, the final comment that, that I had is, is I wanted to have a bit of a discussion about what, what might need to be involved here in a regulation change. So, you know, the Leadyard Fair was, was here a couple of months ago with a, a pretty complicated plan to allow the, the landing of the Leadyard Fair. And as I'm looking at this site, and I'm looking at the zone that it's in, given that it's Gales Ferry Design District is a commercial zone, this particular property is surrounded on most sides by commercial properties. You know, this, this seems like an ideal use for this. And so I, I'm wondering, you know, how simple, how simple we can get here. You know, when, when I look at this and I look at the surrounding towns, many of the surrounding towns have very simple regulations for, you know, essentially what they call temporary events, which includes fairs and bazaars and, you know, any other name that, that you can think of that are all essentially done by site plan review and, you know, on parcels that are, are large enough. And so I, I took a look at our, our regulations and, you know, we, we really don't have any standards for this. But what I did notice is if you look at our campground regulations, our campground regulations actually allow almost all of the things that the fair would be a part of. And however, all essentially those regulations state is that you need to have a parcel that's a sufficient size, you need to have underground utilities, and you need to have buffering. And beyond that, most of the regulations are, you know, are around spacing for RVs and, and that type of thing. And so the question that I posed to the, the commission is whether or not we think we could support a pretty simple change to the regs, which would allow, you know, these temporary event type things in Gales Ferry District on, you know, lots larger than, than 15 acres or something like that. It sounds like that's the, about the size that the fair needs in order to operate is around 15 acres. So something that requires greater than 15 acres, require buffering from residential properties and mostly be done with it. Or do, is the commission think that we need more involved regulations than that?
I, I agree with you that pretty simple. I, I think we could very rapidly go through the previous discussion and take out a lot of it because it's, it's not apropos. And, and I, I know we can't really point zoning regs and say, go get a permit from the town, but Loretta or Sarah, don't you normally pull a permit for a three or four day fair anyway? Doesn't the town sign off on that too? So I don't think that needs to be in the zoning regs. And we should worry about access, egress, infrastructure, buffering. And I'm pretty close to saying, hold our breath, you know, parking, you know, there shall be a parking agreement. We may want to put in the length of time, but the same comment I made the first time Attorney Heller brought the regs, I'm not interested in putting in a set of regs for the fair. I'm interested in putting in a set of regs for events in Leadyard wherever they may want to be. The fair may want to have another event on the town green. I don't want to limit it. And, and I don't want to make the parcel so large that there's only one spot it would fit on. Because, because I think we've looked at the town green, we've looked at areas of the high school, we've looked at other, other parcels where we want to go do events. And I think the simpler we can make it and still be safe and not try and do everybody else's job, the chief of police, the fire marshal, on and on and on. So I agree with you. If we keep it simple, this should not be difficult. And it can be just a separate section on, you know, multi-day events in Leadyard.
And I, and I think that, you know, if, if we, you know, target where we allow these uses to commercial districts, you know, we, we get ourselves out of a lot of the, a lot of the concerns that people may have. And, you know, maybe down the road, we'll need to figure out how to expand it to allow it, you know, in, in residential zones. But, you know, for me at least, when I look at these uses, you know, this is a commercial use. And why, why, why can't we allow it easily in a commercial district? And save, save some of the complexity for when this is trying to be landed in a residential zone?
Mr. Chairman, Tom Boudreau. I think we should be proactive in this and say the number instead of 15 is five acres, for instance, so that we can do the things you want to do without a whole lot of exercise. And I think it would be pretty simple. And I completely agree with Mike, with what Mike just said.
May, maybe if we look at other parcels, Tom, you know, how big is the property that we now call the town green? That was the formal fair site. We, we don't want to make the parcel size six acres and find out we only have four and a half in the center of town. That we ought to look at, what do we have in our commercial districts? And, and, you know, the, if the fair buys the parcel, I'm sure when the regatta comes on, they want to have something that would support the regatta and, and make some money for the fair, help, help to fray the costs.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I think that's something we ought to go look at.
Okay.
What acres do we have? Let's sign it, size it at that. I think five acres is plenty, but especially if there's parking someplace else. I mean, there's no on-street parking in Gales Ferry. We know that.
Exactly.
And, and even when the fair was in Leadyard Center, we posted everything, no parking. It got difficult. We, if the fair was held on this piece of property, it wouldn't surprise me to close some of the streets in the area to limit traffic and, and maybe bring foot traffic in from an adjacent parcel with the, you know, an agreement with that owner. That's a safety thing. I think that's something that they can figure out that's not part of zoning.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to?
Please, absolutely.
So our intention would be those nearby lots, working with the owners for adjacent parking, but also we would continue to work with the town to offer parking at the schools with bus. And we would hope to speak with the Gales Ferry Landing property to see if they would allow us to do drop off in that circular driveway in what used to be a school and see if we could get an entrance to the property right there through their back parking lot. So buses could drop off and we could bring people in through the back parking lot in order to keep them off of the road. We know how narrow Military Highway is right there. It's a place where we would not want to encourage a lot of pedestrian traffic.
Yeah.
The other thing that's a motivator for the fair, our lease for the 95 Gallup Hill property, that property is under contract and we have to have all of the materials that we had moved to that property off of that property by March 30th. Similarly, we have to have all of the material that is on the town green removed by March 30th. So we are eager to work with the commission to see what we could get in place so we could make a purchase arrangement relatively quickly. So we are motivated.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, you know, certainly, you know, from, from the commission, you hear, you know, a, a surprising amount of support. We don't, we don't usually admit that we like things this much. So I think that this is doable. Liz, are you willing to work with Sarah a little bit to address some of the questions that Mr. Boudreau and Mr. Cherry made around what might be a reasonable size here to use as a, as a limit in our commercial districts? I'm guessing it's probably as simple as taking a quick look at a listing of reasonable lots in the Gales Ferry District and the Leadyard Center District and seeing what makes sense?
Absolutely. I don't see how anything that we discussed this evening is not achievable.
Yeah.
Yep. Kyle, any comments from the CEO?
No, I mean, I tend to agree with the commission. It seems like a much better spot than the, the Gallup Hill location. Also, hopefully alleviate some of the issues that we've had at that property in the past. So it sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, great. Now, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's a nice use of the property. You know, it retains some of the agricultural heritage of the property while making, you know, a, a commercial use of the, the property. So I mean, it's, it's a no-brainer. So if there's no other comments from the commissioners, I think we got a path forward. So Sarah, get in touch. So Sarah, get in touch with Liz and see if we if we can't come up with a pretty simple proposed reg that would allow this. I I really do think that, you know, we can probably do this in a couple of sentences. Might want to take a look at the, I know I've stated it before, but take a look at the Waterford Regulation for this, you know, they have a really simple process for allowing, you know, essentially temporary fares with just a couple of a couple of restrictions, and they do it all by site plan review. And, you know, that sounds awfully good to me. So take a look at that and and hopefully we'll we'll hear back from you soon and and maybe we'll have you back on our agenda in March.
Excellent. Thank you all very much for your time and support. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming back. I know you've been here more times than you want. And thank you again for bringing all the letters of support. It's it's nice to see, you know, that that kind of support for the effort. It's great. Okay, with that, our next item is the approval of minutes from January 14th. I'll entertain a motion.
Go move. Marty Wood. Second, Mike Cherry.
All right, is uh, is our minutes from January 14th? Any comments or corrections? I have one under Old Business A, Mr. Boudreau's name is spelled incorrectly.
Oops.
That's not difficult.
The computer did it.
His name was actually misspelled again under adjournment. So correct Mr. Boudreau's name.
I'll I'll do a search and replace.
Thank you very much. Any other corrections or comments? Did I hear something? No, hearing none, I will call a vote. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes 5-0. Next, under Correspondence, the desegregate CT link is back up there because they issued their Connecticut zoning atlas, which is kind of their their final report they came through. So I recommend everyone go take a look at that. And the follow-up on that is there are two upcoming webinars with CLEAR that are relevant. So first, on February 17th, there's a webinar on how to use the Connecticut zoning atlas. And this is presented by Sarah Bronin. And so this should be interesting. So this also talks about transit-oriented development, which is something that we've talked about occasionally in this commission and trying to figure out if there are ways that we can leverage some of the some of the the funding around transit-oriented development. And so I think that's worth going to. The next one is on February 21st, 24th, Why Connecticut Needs GIS Coordination. I actually went to, they prevent presented this a couple of weeks ago, it was more than a couple of weeks, couple of months ago, and I attended it. And anyone else who wants to geek out a little bit on some of the minutia of GIS and some of the problems that come when GIS systems change at town bar town boundaries, I highly recommend attending that. It's quite interesting. So with that, reports, Town Planner Report, Ms. Burdick, I know you are yet another one who is trying to come back from surgery, so I'm not sure if you have a report or not tonight, or if you just have a oral report you want to give.
I don't, I just give you an oral report. Yeah, I've been, I was MIA for two weeks for back surgery, so I did come back to work this week with the wonderful welcome welcome back gift of the driven issue, but we resolved that very quickly. I I told Kyle, it's like a, you know, the zoning fairy, it's 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 rare when you are able to resolve a issue like that in a day. So it was a good group effort on behalf of staff, and we still have a few things to button up there, but that was that was sort of the, hey, did you know? And 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 Mr. Freely was very, very cooperative with staff. And so that was this week's thing. I am working still with Weston and Sampson on the Lot Sip Grant. We're working on getting the steep documents, which are for, I mean, Liz, I mean, it's $130,000. It's a significant amount of money, but there's more paperwork that goes with than you can imagine. So I'm working on that right now. And yeah, we're busy, and I'm sure I'll have a more detailed report for you at the next meeting.
Great, thanks, Liz. Yeah, I I think that, you know, given the mess that the issue at 20 Lorenz Parkway could have become, I, you know, everyone did the right thing and worked together in order to resolve that. So that was that was nice to see. So thanks, thanks for your part in that.
No problem.
Mr. Felice, CEO Report. We do have the attached report on our agenda. Comments from Mr. Felice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to apologize if we uploaded late in the day today. As has been stated already, our efforts this week were really focused down on Lorenz. We know we've been really busy. Usually, we typically slow down in the winter. It wasn't really the case this year. I talked to the building department today, they had seven new houses come in just for the month of February. Doing a lot of reviews, Murray having residents reaching out and inquiring about the spring projects, can I put this here, that sort of thing. Still working on some older enforcement efforts, close some violations out. I've had a couple informal complaints from residents regarding 1496 Route 12 on the corner of Long Cove Road. I was actually down there today, spoke with the manager, that's Computech Auto Center. Hopefully, I can meet with the actual owner next week and we can start addressing that issue. There's a site plan on file for that property, but they've they've gone beyond that. Basically, they're not complying with it, so we need to get that tied up, get some of the stuff out of there, basically. Be happy to answer any questions.
Kyle, when when we approved that, he agreed he wasn't going to put any vehicles in the back 40, if you will, because we questioned why he cleared all the buffering between his lot and the trailer next door. He says, I'm not going to put anything back there. I don't know if that's captured on the site plan or not, but I agree with you, there's a a lot of things there that weren't there. It seems every time I go by, there's something else there. He's been lucky that it's in the time of COVID, so I don't go by very much. So you don't get a lot of calls from me, but he's, I was by there today and it kind of surprised me.
Yeah, the the site plan called for some screening, some plantings between the trailer park, I don't believe that was ever done. And it also showed a fence area in the rear, which has never been installed, so.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, thanks for chasing that. I appreciate it. I I know I'm one of the ones who has complained to you periodically, so it'd be nice to get that back into compliance, that, you know, that's that's a a major site on Route 12 a lot of people see. So, you know, they did a great job in cleaning up the building when they moved the business in there. And so like to keep that, keep that going.
Well, one thing that is nice is he's taken a lot of his signs down that used to be all along Route 12, but he replaced them with automobiles in the back 40, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add something. I want to, I want to renege, I'm done, and go back whenever you have a moment for me.
Whenever, if Kyle, are you done? Or any other questions from commissioners for Kyle on his report?
So the only question I had is, I know this came up a couple of months ago, but where we are on short-term rental permits, if that has moved forward or if that has sort of stagnated, I'm I'm not sure when time is up, but it can't be very far off by now that that two-year sunset window comes up.
Mr. Chairman, I've actually already have that on my to-do list for next week to check the the site. Yeah, because, yes, we have a two-year sunset, and we're going to have to, they're going to have, the council's going to have to reapprove it and make any changes based on any issues that have come up over the past year or so. I think this year was the first year that we did short-term rental permits. So we're coming up, we're coming up quickly, two years isn't as long as you would think. So it is actually on my list, I thought of it last week.
Have have we had any complaints and problems?
I I'll leave that to Kyle, none that I'm aware of. I think Kyle did a good job handling the permits that we received this year, but Kyle, if you want to throw in?
Yeah, so nothing really formally complaint-wise, you know, typical noise stuff, but, you know, we try to reach out to the the owners right away and, you know, let them know that's not allowed. We didn't get a whole lot of permits this year. I don't have the number in front of me. Obviously, it's it's slow down during the winter months. But no, it's been going good. Like I said, no really formal issues, so.
Well, my my guess is, you know, we're going 14 months or 15 months on COVID. I don't know that the two-year window really was adequate to get a picture of whether that ordinance was any good because nobody was traveling.
No, I thi- I think that's a fair point. But also, on the other hand, we had a lot of people that had to, you know, quarantine and they were getting out places. Obviously, they weren't having, you know, maybe functions at these places, but they were separating from their families and stuff and staying at these short-term rentals. So that I think the properties were active all this year, though.
Anything else for Kyle? Hearing none, thank you, Kyle, for your report. Continue, good work. Ms. Burdick, you had an additional comment you wanted to make?
This is more of a Director of Land Use and Planning sort of note, just to let you know that our building official, Randy Dalton, after 26 years, has given his official announcement that he's retiring, and we have advertised his position. Don Steinhoff and I are working with him, we're going to redo the job description because I don't think it's been rewritten in 26 years from the looks of it. But we are advertising, we are taking applications. If you know of someone good that's interested, please send them to Town Hall. His last day will be, well, he gave his official notice to have his last day on March 31st, but he has agreed, you know, if we need him to, to continue a couple extra weeks to work with someone because, you know, it's February 11th already. So just wanted to give you that bit of news, that that's more of a, you know, a personnel issue, but in case anyone says, hey, I know a great person that's a certified building official, please send him my way.
Well, I think the other thing that's interesting is, is that's the last position to replace under the new structure of Director of Land Use.
Yes.
So that that gives you a chance to update that. But I will say, the building official, Randy has done such a good job, most people don't even know what he does, because they're they're just, the the build, there's a, like ZBA, there's a Building Appeals Group. I don't think they've ever had a meet. When when I was nominating Chair for the RTC, people used to say, can I get on that commission? They never meet. And that tells me the building official does a good job, you know? So he'll be missed, for sure.
Yeah, plus, you know, he's a really funny guy. I enjoy working with him and, you know, he's got a good sense of humor and
He does.
He kind of rolls with the punches, and, you know, you're right, we don't all know exactly what he does, but somehow he gets the job done.
Yeah.
And he will be missed by me and I'm sure by all of the land use staff. So I I just wanted to give you all that bit of news.
Let's let's try and make sure that Roseanne doesn't decide she wants to retire at the same time.
No, I already asked her. She said March 2022, so we have one more year with Roseanne.
That'll work.
So far, that's that's not official, folks, so.
Yeah.
Depending on who you replace Randy with, so.
Right.
Yeah. So, well, sorry to hear, but congratulations to him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that was it. I apologize, I just wanted to let everyone know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I I had not heard that, so that's, thanks for letting us know.
You're welcome.
And so with that.
Actually, I, sorry, I have a quick report if you don't mind.
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry if you did not add the regional.
I forgot to mention it, so it's my fault. Just the only thing of note that I think came out of that meeting was that the town of Groton presented plans for their proposed development to the Oral School property. So that's officially public now, and I think it's somewhere between 700 and 900 units. So that's probably the largest significant development in our region happening right now.
Were those slated any affordable or are they all going to be market RE?
That was not part of their presentation. They are gearing the units toward the luxury market for those young engineers coming to work at EB. So a pretty interesting holistic plan with a lot of kind of well-known players in the state involved. It's going to probably be at least a year in the review process and commenting and and public feedback, they think, before the plan gets finalized.
Well, at least it's Groton, they have a large planning department, so that'll help a little bit. If we were going to try and do 900 units out of Ledyard, we'd have to hire a lot of consultants.
Yeah. But I just thought I'd mention that in case anybody wants to follow along and and see how that's going.
Yeah, no, that that will be an interesting process, because I I have certainly already seen some things about it, and so it will be, it it will be a process to to get it in place and, you know, sort of balance the balance the concerns there, so.
And yeah, and keep a good, you know, component of the open space available and all of those concerns.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, no, it's it's when when we first moved here, they were still doing swim lessons in the pool over at the school, and so that was the that was the first place my daughter went to swim lesson was was over there. And so it's a, yeah, you know, I thought the only thing that was a bit of a shame is that it looks like, I believe, all of the buildings are going to be taken down, all the existing buildings are going to be taken down.
Well, I don't know where the, you know, it's in flux, but I did hear that they were going to actually do a historic restoration of of parts of the of the main structures and use them as part of the the plan. I don't know if that has changed.
Yeah.
Not, you know, the classroom spaces are are not unfortunately able to be used, but the main, the main building and the lobby and the particularly the the stage where they had the performing space, they are talking about renovating that.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
For people who have been in the the that building, there is some stunning marble in parts of that building, so it would be great if they were able to reuse some of that. So, yeah, it'll it's it's a massive project, so it'll be interesting to see how it how it develops, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Tom, yeah. What building is this? I missed something.
This is the Oral School, the Mystic Coral School.
Oh, yes, fine, thank you.
Yep.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
There was a pretty good article on affordable housing in the day when Sarah Bonin's Desegregate Connecticut and the zoning parts came out. It looks like they're pushing to finally do something with state regs with the zoning enabling statute. They've talked about that for about four years. And and the push is to try and enforce more affordable housing. You know, when you when you look at the the study they did out of the 169 towns, we fared fairly well, mostly because of what you all did when we modified our regs. We were able to agree to up density a little bit and to allow things that we hadn't allowed before. And as a result, we're more in tune with higher-density, lower-cost housing. It's worth going through that and seeing the parts on Ledyard and looking at some of the other towns to see what's there. I noted today when I was trying to drive by Sweet Hill Farm, that most of the homes in Flatbrook subdivision are finished. And that could be, we might want to approach Green Falls and say, hey, can you give us a a plot view of that, showing where the homes are, and then a picture of each one, and build a little notebook on what affordable housing can look like in Ledyard? Because Because the, the comments against the day's article, everybody was thinking of the Title Eight high-rise apartments in New London and Cabrini-Green in Chicago and the projects in New York. And that's not today's affordable housing. The affordable housing that was built in Flatbrook subdivision, a lot of those homes are more expensive than some of the homes in the Highlands. They were new, but still, you know, it's not, it's different. And having a notebook that shows, you know, here's what was built. You tell me which one's market rate, which one's eighty percent affordable, which one's sixty percent affordable. Unless you're into planning, zoning and land use, you can't tell. They look the same. But I think that may be worthwhile.
I could probably work with Green Falls to do that. I mean, we know which homes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We could do it ourselves almost, but because we know which lots are the affordable lots. And yes, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice because then, you know, every time somebody comes in with an affordable housing proposal, everybody goes back to the, the three, three flat on Inch Cliff and, and that, that's not what that really was. That was an abuse of the regulation, but we didn't have any way around it.
You know, one of the things I got out of the report was a really low-impact way that we could improve what we already have is just taking a look at our ADU regs.
Yes.
And how it, it wouldn't change the landscape at all in most cases.
Well, we stopped short because there was not a political will to put in standalone ADUs, even though when we first wrote it, we had do it in the garage, do it in the basement, add it to your house, put it in the backyard.
Yes.
Also the limitations.
They were getting tarred feathers together, so we backed off of it.
Yeah, well, also, you know, fa- like the family-only restrictions and things like that are limiting.
We got rid of that. It no longer says in-law apartment.
Okay, okay. That's good. Yeah, I need to take a look at it myself, but it was just, it brought it to my attention that it was something important for us particularly.
Well, I, I think
Yes, this is the huge.
Something we need to push before Mary McGrattan decides she doesn't want to be on the town council anymore.
The next week.
Next week is good, right?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, like, you know, ADUs are, are, you know, they, they are always cited, you know, correctly so as the easiest way to provide additional affordable housing. And, you know, yeah, we, we've, we've taken steps in that direction. And the next step, you know, is trying to figure out detached ADUs and, you know, how, how we make that work. You know, so, yeah, it's, it's definitely the next step.
There was a, there was a big article in the New York Times. Whoops, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
There was an article in New York Times that I tried to forward to the chairman and Liz. I don't know if it ever got there. Not last weekend, the weekend before. I'll try and send the byline. Then you can grab it. But it was on ADUs and how they're popular across the country.
And I think this is the year we can do it. With everything going on with COVID and the financial situation that it's put a lot of people in, I think this is the year that we need to make affordable housing a priority.
Yeah, sure.
I'm with you.
Yeah. It's, it's not an issue that's going away. And so it is, it is something that, you know, you're, you're better off being proactive about it than, you know, being chased around by, you know, A twenty-G applications and, you know, instead trying to make sure that we provide, provide mechanisms for people to, people to actually provide affordable housing in town.
Yeah, to be able to live. I mean, you know, that's where we're at.
Nate, I'm going to mark up our Water Resource Protection District proposal.
Sure.
And out and send it to you at events over the weekend lead me to believe we need to put something in writing in our regs.
Yep, yeah, no, it's, you know, it's something that we've often talked about and, you know, something that we tend to be reactionary about. So we don't think about it until something happens on the reservoir. And so, yeah, we have to, need to do better than that. But, all right, with that, I thank everyone for tonight and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second, without objection, I will adjourn this regular meeting of the Ledyard Planning and Zoning Commission at eight twenty-two PM on February eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Good night, everybody. Stay safe.